All right, welcome everybody. Welcome to the meeting tonight. Right now, we're gonna have the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilman McManus is gonna do that for us.
Please rise for the invocation. We thank you Father for this day. We thank you for all you give us here in Pickens, the good things. We thank you for neighbors, community. Thanks for those who have risen up and helped our brothers in need in North Carolina as well here locally. So we just pray for your wisdom and help because we need your help in this time and through these difficult decisions and all these issues that'll be before us. And just pray that you'll give us that wisdom, following any side to each issue. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I'm The Pledge of Allegiance to the fire in our state somewhere in your God and through our lake. We'll reach the sands, whine, bashing, crying about it, and the visible with their tears just to sprawl. You The teeth in
Alright, now I guess everybody knows, our mayor's not here tonight. And he said he's down with his back and we're missing tonight. But right now, the city administrator has a statement from him.
Uh, the mayor says hello to everyone. I am sorry that I can't be there in person, but I am dealing with severe back thing. First, I would like to thank all of you for all you do and your commitment to making Pickens a positive and productive place to live. I want to commend Councilwoman Winters, Winter, and Councilman Wilson for making presentations this evening. It is my hope that each council member has a more engaged position during council meetings in the future. I am also sorry that I can't be there to be engaged in discussion about the pay rates and raises for our much deserving employees. I would like to see us implement the recommendations for our employees that were given by Evergreen Solutions. I feel that any raise given needs to be given on July 1st, 2025. After discussing this with our finance director, Mandy Hess, she feels it would be more fiscally responsible to start fresh with a new budget. I know that this is a council decision. I just want you to know where I stand, and I know that I'm only one vote. Um, and then again, thank you for all your commitment to the citizens of Pickens. One Pickens, One Love, Isaiah Sibio.
Alright, the next thing in line is discussion regarding parking on Court Street, and Councilwoman Winter will handle that.
Yes, thank you. So this is something that came to my attention recently, and I've spent a lot of time thinking about it and looking at it. And if it's okay, Mr. Mayor Pretend, I would like to yield just a couple of minutes to Mr. Barry Crawford to present some information to us that we need to know as a whole.
There. Sounds good.
It's not that. Oh, it's winter. Do they get what's on? They, I didn't need that. Come on, it's Barry Crawford. You been used to it, will you?
I thought we were ready.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, I appreciate Capitol giving me the opportunity to speak. I know you guys not taking public comments tonight. And I'll make it short as I can and try to cover a pretty big deal in just a few minutes here, but I own a property right up here on 107 Court Street. And um, I'm looking at doing Airbnb, maybe like the summer of 2026 to open that. That's what I'm shooting for. I've been remodeling it. It's a two-story building that I purchased from Lauren Murphy here at Pickens Savings and Loan a few years ago to do that Airbnb. And that's actually my residence now. That's where I've been staying for like the past four years while I've been paying for this building. And finally got it paid off. So we're doing some uh, we're going inside. I got some pictures. Do I need to pass these around now or leave them with you? Of the inside of it and the outside and then the ultimate goal, the loft at 107 Court Street. And that's gonna be a business that hopefully they'll bring people in for like the Isaiah Festival, the Clemson ballgames and stuff, and maybe some judges that come in from out of town to do a case, or maybe you guys might have some family that wanna stay there right in town. My problem is, is with the parking, you know. And I've looked at this thing several ways. You know, I'm here requesting it for me and for my Airbnb. But we've got a new law firm, Mr. Hendricks Law Firm, that's done a fabulous job on their building. I don't know if you guys have seen that on Court Street, but that building looks really nice. And it's gonna look good for our town. And that's an attorney's office gonna be for real estate and all kind of stuff. So that's my neighbor over there, and he don't have any parking either. When we have court hearings up here, man, there's, you are just jammed in there. You're not getting in there. There's an alleyway behind us. If any of you guys are familiar with where Garen's Cafe is. Now, you could park around back, but that is private property. That's owned by Heather Thomas. That's private property. So we're looking at seven spots. We're asking for seven spots on Court Street for commerce for these businesses on that, on the opposite side of the street from the courthouse. And that's for commerce for these businesses, cause let's just say that one of you guys and your wife, y'all own a jewelry store in the building I'm in. And you've got no parking there. You don't have no reserved parking for your customers. And they're having to walk from the service station down here or over in the courthouse parking lot over where the old hospital was to come to your business. I mean, I'm looking at this thing past me when I'm dead and gone. You know, allotting these two parking spots in my, at my particular place. Hendricks Firm needs four, I mean, hands down for an attorney's office, I guarantee you. And then there's one other one right down the street. But when you guys look at this, this is real generic. I'm a high school graduate from Pickens High School. I'm not a engineer. So, but you can understand it real clear. There's 168 parking spots for the courthouse. Even our clerk of court parks right here on the corner, and they got parking down here at Pickens Savings and Loan. But if you go on the back, you can get a clearer image of it. This used to be the old Cannon Memorial Hospital for you guys that don't know. And the county purchased that, our taxpaying dollars purchased that for parking for the courthouse. But guess what? It's a little far away, isn't it? When you can just be at 107 Court Street and walk right in the front door. But that don't help our businesses over there. So there's 168 parking spots for the courthouse. Even there, when you go on jewelry duty, they hand you this. It tells you to park over in this parking spot. So if they need to reserve spots for their solicitor's office or their higher authority over there, then they need to post signs over there. Now, one other thing to keep the city from being so involved with it. I think you guys should look at maybe letting the property manager, I mean, you guys probably own your building outright, and I own mine outright, to kinda manage this. So we're not calling Chief Beach to come up there and hey, tow and tow. I noticed that the porket up here, they've got a towing zone sign, and then it has Pace and Reeves. It has the company that would tow your vehicle for parking there. That's for their business. Now, I do currently have two signs up there, and that's been a problem with some of these folks at the courthouse. But I came here and went through the chain of command before I put those signs up, under Fletcher Perry. And it was between administrators. So it never went in the full chain of command like it needed to tonight in front of a full council. So, but he told me, look, that's a city street. You own that building. I'm gonna let you put those two spots up there. However, if you was on Main Street, that's a state highway. I couldn't help you. But go ahead and put your signs up. And I don't know about enforcing it. And that's where we left it. But those guys at the porket up there, they enforce it. John Reeves will tow them if they need to. And I'm the guy that's not gonna have every single car towed every time somebody's there. But my wife comes in, she works from six in the morning to 11 o'clock at night. And when she comes home late at night, I feel safer with her being here. You guys need to discuss with Chief Beach because I'm not gonna sit here and call names out with problems that we've been having in that alleyway right there. And I've got some video I've got to show them from last night, some people trying to go in the back of the courthouse. But there's a lot of people walking up and down that street late at night, and I think the majority of them live in that vicinity is all I'm gonna say. And um, it's just, it'll be a safe environment. If somebody comes out of town and they've got their boat and their car, I'm just asking for two spots at my particular build. I'm not asking for more than what we need for an Airbnb. And I'd really appreciate any help on this that you guys. And just think about it as for commerce on that side of the street. And don't restrict those businesses from not allowing a client or something to pull up or a customer at those buildings. And I'll hand this to you, and you guys can discuss. And I really wanna appreciate Councilwoman Winters for even, I mean, I reached out to her and said, I just need some help on this. She got immediately with me. And I appreciate you doing that. I appreciate it. And I appreciate y'all giving me the time.
Alright, thank you.
And so from a business perspective, if I were to looking at putting an office on this street, I think it's a great hindrance that these folks don't have somewhere for clients or for commerce to park. And it is a city street, so it's, in my opinion, it's in our duties to address it. And I think this is a small number of parking spaces that we could give these businesses to make sure that they know, or future owners or future tenants to know, that they're going to have a parking spot to park in. And I don't think that it would cause much of an issue for the city because it's the owner's responsibility to call a tow company if somebody's parked there that's not supposed to be. And then it's on the person parking there to pay the tow company. So I don't foresee it being a lot of extra work or issue for the city. And I think that it's really important for those business owners. So there are seven spots here that Barry has highlighted. I've gone by and looked at them. And I know Ray was out there when I was looking at them, so he's seen them. And I, you know, I open it up to questions, but I think that simple signs stating that those parking spots are specific to the businesses that are there. And towing will be enforced by the property owner or the tenant at the owner's expense. Those are my
Hey. So it's like, any other comments or?
Really, I, they, you know, they need to run that through. We've got attorneys present. That's public property and I believe it could be problematic to deputize anyone to order someone to tow a certain public property. We'd have to check into the legality.
The legality of the tenant.
We, we're always have to sell them that property.
Pardon?
We almost have to sell them in property in order to give them the right to
To tow people.
But, and with anyone in a city on the street can say, this is my area. You can't park there. If you're still wanting, you had to do so every
On a city on the street, I agree. I mean, and I think that that's fair if anyone, if any business owner on a city that's on a city street came to us and said, hey, I don't have any parking.
There may be some legal instrument, a lease for instance, where they would have control of the property and to determine the towing. We have an attorney standing out right.
I would just address that just briefly. The
Could you, I'm sorry, could you give your name, please?
Yes, my name is Les Hendricks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let me, let me, I think you're speaking.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Um, I wasn't gonna speak, but anytime I address a public body, I first thank you for serving. I see it every, every, every couple of weeks, and it's a tough job, so I appreciate what you're doing. To address your, the issue, I think that is an issue, but I think it can be resolved by posting a sign that says, by the city ordinance, that's what you do. And then we would post the sign and say, what we're gonna do, do not park here, or you might be towed. The issue is, is that with the courthouse, you have people that find it much more convenient to park in your businesses at eight o'clock in the morning when they get there and leave at six o'clock at night or five o'clock at night. And what we would have is people going in and out. So the two uses are not compatible. And for a city that wants growth and commerce, to have that type of parking would be much more beneficial for the city as a whole rather than allowing one institution, the courthouse in this, in this case, to use the parking exclusively. And that's what's happening right now. I will note for council that the county purchased a building, and a lot of the courthouse personnel or a significant number of the courthouse personnel will be moving over to Garvin Street. But that's not done yet. It's gonna be a while. But hopefully that will remedy some of the situation because I imagine it happens on, some on Main Street also. A, this is a smaller way of addressing the problem. A larger way would be to have parking meters all around town. That's a much bigger, bigger and intrusive issue. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Councilwoman, what I can do is staff will reach out to our city of Trenton and just get an opinion because I agree there are likely scenarios where it could be encoded and codified in an ordinance that might address those concerns, but we just need to get the legal review.
Okay.
And we'll move forward with that.
And that's what I was hoping for, was really just an ordinance, something stating.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Look, is it, is it proper to call you Mr. Mayor or just?
What do we call you?
Mr. Mayor Pretend? Is that the right? Okay. I apologize. I'm just, first time with you running the show for me, that is. But anyway, so I wanna make sure I understand what the problem is here. The parking is limited. I understand that issue because of employees or just people who are at the courthouse on any given day.
Actually, it's employees because they're regularly parking in those spots. They feel that that's their spot to park in. But also, you know, other court attendees.
Right.
If they're available.
And I think the problem too is, so in other words, when they get to eight and the guard doesn't leave till six, five. So that spot's taken the whole, basically the whole time.
In the, in the parking issue, is it daytime issue, not an evening time issue?
Correct, weekend issue.
It's not a weekend issue.
Lemon on time, just like there is on Main Street. But again, then someone's gotta police it.
Yeah.
And then handle that.
I think that, in my mind, there's plenty of parking, especially with the solicitor's office moving. There's, that does free up a significant number of everyday parkers that need to use the courthouse. But in my mind, I think it's, it would become a leasing issue. It's seven spaces that we're talking about. So there's plenty of parking for the courthouse. I mean, I go there on a regular basis for a volunteer position and never have an issue parking.
Is that the only street where there's a parking issue?
There could be others, but I think that's the main street that's city-owned, that has an issue versus county or state roads.
Okay. So are there other streets, regardless of who owns them, that there might, where there's a parking issue where there's not enough parking for property owners and guests?
Yes.
What are those streets?
I mean, you're gonna have the same problem when the county moves to Garvin Street. There's no parking there either. They've got, what, dozen parking spaces for an market?
We were looking at that property. There's no arcing there.
So they're gonna park on the street. All the employees gonna park there. Anyone that's visiting that building's gonna become the problem. You know, you do have county employees. Can't we ask the counties, hey, can you not tell your employees to park in a lot and allow the parking for patrons downtown?
Well, let me interject again. The, I understand, I think there needs to be resolution here on this. And what I don't wanna see happen is we choose something that simply opens a can of worms where everybody in town, every business downtown says, hey, I want reserved parking in front of my business, even if they don't really need it. They're like, hey, you did it over there. You can do it over here. It's not a big deal. And suddenly you're doing a lot of that. And then, then you've got an enforcement issue because there are gonna be people who pull in that don't pay attention to the sign or don't care. And then who's gonna, who's gonna run interference for that? And so I would, I would like to find a creative solution that is low maintenance, okay? But also doesn't run into problems with, you know, ownership and legalities of what the city can do and can't do. I would assume that the city can pretty much set its own parking rules. Is that a fair assumption?
That's about as long as it's not on 183, which is our main street.
Right.
Because that's not a city.
Your street. Right, any DOT, well.
For the parking, as long as it's within a range of, I mean, the state statutes actually allow the erection of parking meters, which most small towns had until the eighties. So that, we do have broad discretion over the enforcement of parking. We don't own the parking, so we can't dedicate any parking. It's just open to all residents and
First come, first served. Right, okay. And parking, I mean, I know Hendersonville does the parking meter thing, and it, and it's, it works for them, I guess. The problem is that that doesn't solve your problem. Because then your people who need the parking, who are saying, hey, we need dedicated spaces, are gonna have to either be excluded, no meter, or they get a meter, they gotta pay, you know, they gotta put coin in or whatever they do. So that defeats the point of having, you know, their exclusive parking. Yeah, I'm just, I don't know the answer at this moment because I actually didn't realize that this was that much of an issue. And by the way, I was over at your property last night. I was, I was there last night. I was coming home from church. I did not, I did, I did actually find one, but I had to circle the block twice, actually. But I was there after church and I wasn't sure, I wanted to make sure I understood what was going on. So I did walk down the alley between your place and the next door place, and I did go across the street to the courthouse and threw some rocks. And over, over the little gate thing to see where the trash was, because apparently the trash folks have had some complaints about being able to get to the trash bins at the county. So I wanted to understand that as well. So forgive me. I'm now on record. I'm a lawbreaker. So, um, we're not gonna resolve this tonight, I guess, right? I mean.
I don't think we're gonna be able to because we have to talk to the city of Chinese. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. And I do understand that the can of worms on, you know, how many other places in town are gonna come out of the woodworks and say, we need designated parking as well? The answer in my mind is, you know, if it's on a city street, we should be able to give people some sort of structure.
I agree. To your point, we could, staff could also do some additional research. We could reach out to you and, and Councilwoman Winter. And I mean, the merit of a time limit and, you know, perhaps what they're doing in Hendersonville is that instead of reserving spaces, which is not the norm for an open environment for specific businesses, it becomes available because the cars have to cycle every couple of hours or people have to pump, you know, money or credit card into
Right, right.
Instrument.
Right.
And typically that's enforced, except for nightlife areas, it's enforced eight to five.
Right.
Then it would be available for the, for the short-term rental or the resum.
See, I think that'd be great. Now, I've seen, I've seen cities, I should, I say I've seen, I've heard of cities, maybe I've seen them, where they, where they, you have, you have that resident parking, so to speak, that permanent set aside, but it's by permit. And so that the person who needs it has to have a permit, however that happens, that permit is visible on the vehicle, okay? So that when, when the police roll through and the permit and there's a car parked there and doesn't have, doesn't have the permit showing, then it's an easy, you know, identification kind of a thing. I don't know if that is an idea, if that opens up a can of worms as well. But I mean, if, if, if the city is flexible in what they can choose, there are a lot of, this is not a unique problem to Pickens. Thankfully, only now having to really deal with it, it just seems like, you know, things of getting more congested in downtown. So I know we're gonna have an interstate go through soon, so I, you know, I make sure.
You know, we say this, but
That's a joke.
205, 209, 211, you have residents that live there. How they're gonna get a dedicated spot where they can park and unload their groceries and there's apartments all in downtown?
Two, you mean on Main Street?
On Main Street, on 205, 209, 211. And they're gonna say, well, they get, they've got a dedicated spot. I mean, they may have to drive around the block when they get home to try to find, and park a block away to get to their, to where they live.
But in my mind, and tell me if I'm wrong, that's not a city issue because it's not a city road.
But the city rest?
Well, I understand, but we can't, like, they can't expect us to be able to help them with something that we don't have jurisdiction over. We really can only help people if it is a city road.
Well, just to make a mental note, if, if, if we're encouraging residential living downtown, as that, as those things come up, should they come up before council or zoning or whatever, it seems like their needs for parking ought to be addressed during that construction or permitting process, whatever, so that we can begin to deal with that. We got the, we got the immediate issue. We have potential issues. I mean, downtown living is becoming more popular in every town, not just Greenville or Atlanta or wherever. But it's, even Pickens has people who like living downtown. It's convenient to walk to a few places if they're available. So, but if we're gonna say, okay, every time we have somebody that has a building and has an upstairs apartment, then that person needs a place to park. And well, they're coming in to say, hey, I need, I need a dedicated space because there's no place to park. So I just, aside from this, since we're talking about downtown parking, because this is the bigger issue, is are we gonna, are we talking about downtown parking being a problem? Or is this just isolated, one time, it's never gonna be a problem anywhere else in downtown? So I just, should we expand this discussion slightly?
I think it's always gonna be a problem and it has been, you know, for as long as I can remember. I just, my standpoint is that if we can help because there's city streets, then we should do something to help those business owners. If it's not our street, we, we can't help you.
Well, how do we do it on Main Street?
Main Street is a state highway.
Yeah, but how do we, who decided how the parking works on Main Street?
First come, first served.
DOT, yeah.
I mean, angled parking versus parallel parking versus any parking? I mean, how was that decided?
I think we could restructure the parking on Main Street potentially, and it's been talked about a lot, but it would have to go through the DOT approval process first.
Okay.
Because it's not our street.
So what's there now is approved by DOT? The way, the way parking is handled on Main Street now is, was approved by DOT?
I hope so.
Well, yes, the infrastructure, the way it's laid out, the regulation of it, other than general statewide traffic regulations, the city does have some ability to regulate that. It's hard to time, let me see.
Right. With or without DOT approval?
I think that's within the band of things that municipalities are
Okay.
Can't change your speed limit, can't put in a speed bump, can't put in a crosswalk. But I think in general, they've got cities that brought discretion on time limits and that kind of thing to park.
For want of to grow, I'm, we should try to accommodate our, my voices. Our business is coming in here. I think we should do everything we can, know this can come up and we can give it, you know, make it an impossible situation because of everybody's, you know, their uncle, but we have a junior one come in and a, and a business owner. I mean, that's what we're all allowing. I mean, we want to grow our city. So we should do our best to accommodate them. There is that giant lot.
I, I mean, you guys are gonna be using that too for overflow, right? They can use that, right?
It's privately owned, so I don't know if there's an agreement. I know that my eye doctor folks sometimes park back there if they're able to, but it's a privately owned lot.
Because there's a giant lot behind the courthouse to the left.
Oh.
That's for the court.
That's for, no one knows that you're, I mean, you could use that, and that's probably what you're gonna expect to use. I mean, if you're doing a I mean, if you're doing a closing on a house or something, you're gonna probably have six or eight cars show up, you know what I mean, sometimes and, yeah, whatever it is.
We have three parking spots in the back before the front, that would handle the big.
Okay, okay, and I was thinking of your employees too, so, anyway, they can or cannot, or?
In the courthouse part?
Yeah.
Um, my understanding is that you, it's courthouse parking only, so if somebody.
No one's monitors or anything?
I've seen them monitor it before, yeah, I've seen people get pulled out of there if they're not there for court.
Uh, we can, oh, I think we need to treat courthouse property as private property.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, anyway.
I think it's just a courthouse property over here. Not, not the part on the street, you're right, where they're parking.
Which is not courthouse property.
Yeah.
Then, right.
I mean, but everybody thinks that's courthouse property, but it's not.
Well, they have signs over there that say exclusive parking for certain.
On that road, it does.
On Court Street.
From the town of police cars.
Okay, so.
So again, they've taken that part.
They've designated their spots.
So, yeah, and that's the city roads, right?
It are.
That's just the other side of the street.
Kind of.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think we can, we're gonna have to talk about what, two earrings anyway, right, after we get.
If we do it in ordinance way.
Yeah, make an ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to know if, if our existing ordinances allow for the latitude to make some decisions without changing, you know, the law. Um, or if we need to do that, obviously we will, but, um, how do we check that out? Is there?
The attorney will tell us.
I'll review with our city attorney and get a report pinned.
Okay.
I'm happy to help to you if I can, like that.
Oh, one other question for Mr. Hendrix, what was your address, what's the building you're in, which? One eleven, okay.
And I believe there's another business there too, a small business, is it a fabric, like a metal fabrication?
I'm not sure what they do, but there is another.
Yeah, there's another one as well, so there's several.
Plus, on this, on Court Street?
Is it?
Okay.
One.
One eleven is your office.
Yeah.
Exclusively your office in that building. Okay.
Eight or eight.
Well, the only thing over there is me thirteen, which is if county.
It's PTI.
Right, you got one thirteen, the other, the building next to it is storage building for the bank, and they own that.
There's a.
Yeah, so there's no other businesses over there.
Now.
Sorry, I'm, I'm the mailman, I know. I'm there every day. There's no businesses over there. Fans can, just hopefully win me one day. Yeah, see if we can do it.
Like the attorney, I think we can.
All right, is that, wrap that up?
I think we should, yeah, and these go with it too.
Uh, just hang on.
Same.
Yeah.
Okay, then, um, the next item is discussing, what is it? Regarding banners for businesses, Councilmember Wilson.
Hi, um, I've had a, uh, I have five businesses that's asked about this banner that we have downtown, um, that according to Brian and Tim, it was done by a send Pickens, they're no longer there, this one particular one, they're out of business, we have, there's five of these banners that's downtown, there's no longer in business. Um, you know, I wanna come up with a program that obviously to change this, to update it, get new businesses, advertise them with our name on it, their name on it. Brian says it's, uh, it's a hundred and forty-two dollars, that the business will pay, the city will hang them up. Um, but I have some businesses that, um, as a mailman, that I have that's outside of the central business district that would like to have this. Can we look at, um, just a black pole, these are all hung up on these, are antique light poles downtown.
These.
Um, that we can install just a black pole in front of these businesses and, and what areas would we go in? Or we would do it, you know, throughout all of the, um, city limits? Or we're only gonna exclusively only advertise the people in the central business district? Or do we want to allow other people to buy the, uh, uh, spot on the poles downtown? I think it'll be too clustered. There's, um, like I said, there's five that's out of business right now, there, I think about twenty poles downtown. But if you put one on every pole, they'll just get to be ugly and everybody will ignore one of them. So I'd like to look at installing metal poles in front of businesses, uh, one of them is Mountain View, um, funeral homes, that when you drive by, you'll see one of these sitting in, in their driveway. And let them know that they're participating with the city. Um, Mark Gillespie's here, um, he's off to go and talk to these businesses and see who, how many people want to purchase one of these. Again, they would pay for it, we'd have it printed and we would install it.
Did that per year, right?
No, it's, it's for the, the purchase of the printing, they just paid for the printing, I don't know, these have been up some, I don't know how long.
That would be up to us, where?
We would have to set a program up that's, um, but that, you know, that way, this way, you know, I took the picture, had it printed so that we understand what we're looking at. Um, this place has been out of business for close to a year. So we just need to update them, come up with a program, or if we wanna continue it, or take the ones down that we have that are still viable.
Mr. Mayor, pro ten, if I may, um, and you brought this up at a recent, uh, council meeting. Um, since then, I've reached out to, to Mark, who is a, a very passionate city resident, who is always looking for an opportunity to make the city better. Um, and he has, uh, volunteered to be a champion, uh, for this. Uh, concerns are to make sure that whatever we do, um, as we move forward, is not like the former program that gets a good start and then, you know, falls over, dies. Uh, we want something that's sustainable and also, uh, revenue neutral. Um, so that it is being paid for by the businesses that are receiving the permit, promotion. Um, and Mark and I, I was out ill last week and we have not been able to, to connect, but we do have some broad strokes of, I mean, it's fine to open it up to the entire city, uh, it just comes down to how best to display them um, and how best to, uh, price it as, as Councilman Rogers suggested, I think we might be looking at kind of a, uh, you know, I formerly was in the advertising business for a long time, um, you, you know, a, a, a minimum, uh, fee, uh, annually, so that they're actually maintained and that we can actually, uh, you know, pay Mark or, or someone who's involved in the program to, to actually think about it and, oh, somebody went out of business and I've gotta go take down and take the order. Um, it, it's not something that you can do at much over cost, because we wanna provide it as a service. Um, but if you do it at cost, then we're losing money and everybody who, whether they wanna participate or not, is paying for it. Um, so we'll do some homework, I think it's a very good idea, uh, to update this certainly, whether we, uh, uh, and I don't think any of us wants to just summarily end the program, um, we wanna revive it and think through it so that it's sustainable. And, uh, I think that Mark and I will be able to get together probably this week. Um, if he doesn't get sick, since everybody's been taking turns, uh, and we can bring back some further information, uh, after we have that and certainly we'll, um, see if we can get together with you as well when we do speak about that.
Thank you. So, do we wanna make the question also, is, we're not gonna allow political speech, I mean, this is just for business owners. I, we don't want to bring up that door, so that would, something we need to run by the attorneys, can we? And we prohibit someone that wants to put up a sign, or is it just for business owners only, and can we do that?
Yeah, I, I think that the, typically these programs are limited to, um, business license holders with a physical, uh, bricks and mortar presence.
Okay, yeah, that's, so we could, we could draft a ordinance like that.
Yes.
I, yes. Mr. Mayor, pro ten, I have a couple of questions, if I might, um, about this issue, so I wanna make sure I understand, this banners, these banners are not presently addressed in our sign ordinance of any kind, this is not, this doesn't fall under that, that ordinance at all?
No, and these aren't, uh, you know, they're not temporary signs, they're permanent, they're not signs on the, the building, this is more of a community-focused program within the right of way, so it would be up to the discretion of council to determine how best to handle it. It's basically on the people's property.
Right, right, and, but when you wanna put a banner up at an intersection, at certain intersections in town that are on the people's property, you gotta pay a fee, right?
Yes, there's a fee involved in, there would be a fee involved in this program.
To this program, um, and we feel like it's, I, I know in other communities that have these type of banners, they're often used to promote community events as opposed to specific businesses. Has, has, has Pickens ever done that? Is that, is that been the point of these, was that how it got started, you know, just to have holiday banners more or less, or, or has it always been kind of a business-focused thing?
I don't.
Um, it's always been more of a business, so I guess, I, we put up events, banners and signs leading up to events, but not on those poles that I've remembered.
Many communities, they're seasonal banners, they're spring, summer, um, holidays, uh, and they're not attached to any particular uh, business, I've seen them where, uh, you know, the month of Veterans Day, uh, there are some cities that have programs where they will go out and get photos of local veterans. Um, and, uh, the families pay for a banner that honors them. Um, I, I mean, this is, you know, there are cities that have, I, I'm not familiar with one that has these particular banners. Um, there are some that have wayfinding little signs that say, you know, pub, pub name over here, um, kinda on corners.
Right.
Um, so that's kinda, it's a little bit of a hybrid, what, what we have here as far as this program goes.
So I've, so do we, do we think this is an asset that, that helps promote the city, or is this just a convenience to business owners? I mean, obviously it promotes their business ideally, but I mean, I'm just curious, where, where are we, where are we, what do we see the value of these things?
Revenue.
Promoting the business, which in turn should help support the city.
But, but, but the, the banners themselves are revenue neutral, I heard Tim say, so they're, they're, you, you simply can only cover your costs, you can't make money on these.
Well, we would have to make a little.
Well, you, I mean, you could, you could make, uh, uh, some of, I mean, you, there's nothing that enjoins the council from making whatever decision to support the program, it was my, and you could say everybody gets a free banner.
Right.
Um, that's within the power, it was more my
Okay.
recommendation that, that we kinda, uh, protect everyone by, it kinda pays you go. If you're interested, you could participate and basically your contribution will be to pay for your part of it and a little bit more, uh, for, to make sure that it continues to be maintained.
Is, is there is there a possibility of actually leasing these spots to a private company who pays a fee? And then they handle everything, they go out and find the businesses to put up there and charge whatever they want?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is within the realm of possibility, uh, for the amount of, uh, money we're talking about, and I don't think there would be any.
And there's. Well, and I, and I, and I, what I'm concerned about is the fact that, you know, who, who's gonna put the banners up and take them down and who, you know, that, that constant up and down and if, and if you gotta take them down because there's a business out of, that's gone out of business, someone's gone out of business, and then they're not paying anything for that, I mean, they're, I mean, you, you collect enough upfront to cover the potential that they go out of business, I'm just, to me, it just seems like a, it, it's, it's, um, uh, it's a maintenance issue, right? It's, it's, there's the constant policing of it, which is understood, you gotta police it, some, you know, you gotta take them down, put them up, they gotta be changed out periodically, you know, you're gonna wanna update your sign if it's been up there for a couple of years, they get bleached out, whatever, they gotta be, uh, replaced. Um, and that just seems like a lot more work for us downtown, when there might be other things to work on downtown.
Wait, I mean, this could dress up downtown, you guys, can you guys ever been to Salzburg, Austria? Every day, you walk, you walk, you walk, you walk downtown Salzburg, and there's really unique signage, and it's been up there two hundred years. And they don't let the people change them, but they're very unique and beautiful, and, and they're unique to the business, so we could come up with something like that where it's not, they're just not all the same flags with the name of a business on it, but I mean, they're, they're unique, you know, maybe, I, I don't know, each, you know, the businesses, you know, may create their own and, and the city passed it, obviously a couple hundred years ago, and they don't let them change it. But it's absolutely beautiful to walk downtown and just look at their signage, so we could make it something like that, and I think it should be revenue generating for the city, and we need all the revenue we can get. I, I don't like the new to part, but, you know, that's what we have to do, do you guys wanna do it? Uh, but we, that's why we're gonna change it once a year or up, update it, you know what I mean, but if we put the unique signage, I think it could make our town very attractive. And, um, and we get once a year, we're making sure it's coming down if they're not there anymore, so, this is my thought. Well, look at, look at downtown, old, old town, old downtown Salzburg, Austria, it's, it's, it's wealth, do, it's worth it, for me, and you can see that all over the world, but there is really unique.
That it?
But.
Okay, so now the next thing is dis- discussion regarding the sign ordinances. Can I guess that, that you, um, that was one that, uh, this has been, uh, our planner, Jennifer Visage, has been working on this, it went through the planning commission. Um, she's been reviewing it with, uh, the city attorney, and basically they've, uh, come to the point where they, they did, uh, update some things that they feel like they wanna take back to the planning commission before it comes to council for debate. So the recommendation from the city attorney was just a, a postponed discussion of this until he can review it for. Sounds good.
I do.
All right, I guess we can just move along then. Yes, sir. All right, so now we're in the conven- conven- what are we gonna call this? Convened the executive session to discuss personnel as it relates to compensation and market analysis asked while by the SC code section three oh four, four seventy. So at this time, I need a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion that we convene in the executive session to, to discuss personnel as it relates to compensation and market analysis is allowed by South Carolina Code, section thirty dash four dash seven, eight, one.
Second.
So we have a first and a second, so I guess we're.
All those in favor?
All those in favor.
Where's the right end?
Okay. So I mean.
Yes.